Dinner really quick? Okay, so we'll go ahead and call this study session to order. Let's see, we'll go ahead and start with the agenda. We don't need a roll call or anything, right? Of the council members? Not really for the study session. Okay. So we'll go ahead and start, Larry. Is it going to be Kevin or who's going to?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'll make the introduction but wanted just again establish the theme for tonight's evening, for this evening's presentations. We've got a policy discussion. Tonight, we've got Brian McBride and James Heaton from Wilson and Company that are going to provide the mayor and council with a bit of an overview of the continued goal and strategy of expanding our wastewater treatment plant. And then we've got presentations from CAG and from the SEMPO, and we'll make those introductions when we move to that, to the next two, two slideshows. So with that, Brian, do you want to introduce yourself and jump into this presentation?
Thanks, Larry. You said Brian McBride. National Lead for Water Wastewater for Wilson and Company happened to be here in Phoenix, and James Heaton is the Phoenix Practice Lead for Water Wastewater. So we've been working with the city, I think most of you heard me speak before, we've worked with the city on the wastewater program for a couple of years now, helping to solve the issues, to try not to slow things down here and keep up with the demand from the developments coming in. And so what I'm going to talk about today is there's the water reclamation facility upgrade is a continuing process in Phase Four, and I'll talk about this as the Phase Four B is the one that is about to be initiated. And so I just wanted to bring everybody through about what, you know, the background is and what the reasoning for it is. So I'll try to, you know, engineers don't understand a lot of times that other people don't, normal people don't speak our language. So I'll try, if you have any questions as we go along, feel free to interrupt me, but I'll try to make sure that I speak normally if I can. So. So a preview here, I'm going to talk, this isn't too long a presentation, but I'll take everybody through the history of the plant real quickly and the capabilities, and then talk about why a Phase Four expansion was necessary at all, which is underway right now, the first phase of it. Why was it split into an A and B? Very strategic reasons for that, and I'll go through those. And then talk about the objectives for Phase Four A, which is what's under construction right now, and then the challenges of going, doing Four A and Four B, and what were the Four A challenges? Why did we do Four A? Then, what was included in the Four A upgrade that's being constructed now? Then what are the objectives of the Phase Four B upgrade? What's going to be included in the Phase Four B upgrade? And what is the projected cost and schedule of the Phase Four B upgrade? So just to give some perspective here, you see, I think, I don't know if you can see that here, the plant, for those who don't know, is up in the northwest corner here. You Are Here is down here along, along the road just to our south there. And so the plant has been, go down one, here's a view of the plant, I'm going to, there's, for those that can see here, we have the, some things I'm going to talk about briefly here. These are the oxidation ditches. This is before the Four A upgrade that's going on right now. These are the clarifiers. Here's a key thing to this. This is the abandoned pretreatment basin that was used before to treat the abit flows, to pre-treat the abit flows before they got that under control to pre-treat themselves. And so that was abandoned some years ago and put directly into the plant. And so they don't use that right now. But it is, it is quite an asset there that, that we're taking advantage of. So, so you can see the plant, there's, there's room on the site. A lot of these things are, by the way, there's a lot of things that aren't used anymore that were just abandoned in place, and so they're just, just out there not being used and slowly rotting away. So a little bit on the plant history, this is first commissioned in the 1970s, and it's had three significant upgrades there, Phase One, Two, and Three, thus the name for the Phase Four that we're doing now. The last expansion, Phase Three, was done in, was commissioned in 2012. The capabilities in 2022, it had an average day influent flow capacity of 12 million gallons per day, and a peak hour influent capacity of 24 million gallons per day. And of course, that accounts for during the day, you have, you have peaks, so a lot more flow comes in than, than on the average. So the average is 12 on the capacity, but it can take as much as 24 in the, the front of the plant. Then the effluent disposal capacity in 2022 was only six MGD under their permit, and that's what flows out to the, the north branch of the, the river. And so at that, at, in 2022, the plant was already exceeding the permit limit for the effluent flows. They were over that six MGD, and the committed capacity of the new developments coming in was nearly 12 MGD in 2022. And so there, that was an issue, and that we were, we were brought in to help solve. So the four, the Phase Four B overall, including the one that's under development now, why was that necessary? Well, really, in support of the city's successful economic growth plan, you've had a ton of growth, you know, industrial, commercial, residential, and, you know, it's hard to keep up with that. So, so there was significant new development, and as I said, the flows are exceeding the effluent permit limit. And so, you know, there was talk at one time about having to, you know, do we, are we going to have to slow this down? Are we going to have to get in the way of some of these developers? And, and of course, that's something you don't want to do. So why was the Four, Phase Four split into A and B, which you normally wouldn't do, you'd do it all at once, but there was a time and a cost limitations. So the time I mentioned already, the city was already exceeding its effluent limits, and typically, an upgrade of this size takes about a five-year project lifecycle. So, but what we really wanted to target was, okay, can we figure out a way to do the permitting, design, and construction of an expansion by 2025? So that would require temporary measures required to meet a schedule. So it was really an accelerated schedule, and so, okay, can you figure out a way to do it to get it permitted? Because there's, you know, a lot of permit requirements to do that. And then on top of that, there was cost, because this was something at the time that the city did not have in its funding. So, so this one was less expensive, I'll talk that in a minute. It was able to delay a lot of the expenditures till the city could, could line up the funding for it in the future and, and put it into the city budget planning, which is, which has been done. Okay, now talking about Four A, as I said, there were some challenges to that, and so we had to look at some innovative ways to get it done. You know, I guess some, some consultants probably say, no, you just, you just can't do it. You're, too bad, you got to give a five-year project. Well, so we came in and looked for a solution there. How do we increase effluent discharge options to increase the flows for the discharge, which is a big primary problem? And then how do you minimize the upgrades that you need to do to expand the plant capacity to meet that 2025 schedule and, and delay the expenditures? So we took a look at it and said, okay, can we put off short-term, non-critical upgrades? Things that you don't have to do that could get it permitted, and yet, you know, would normally be done in a project of this type, and achieve the permit requirements for the six MGD expansion? And then enable expanded effluent recharge and reuse, which, you know, the city really needs for, for its Dawes, for the, you know, the available water rights. And so a lot of that had to be taken into account, too. So they wanted to provide the west side industries with the recycled water, which is part of the plant, and then increase groundwater credits for future use. I won't go into that too much. But of course, a creative solution was required, and I think some of you are familiar with the solution that, that was determined. So that solution started with converting the abandoned basin to flow equalization. So that, that old line pretreatment basin could be converted to basically, everything from there on down could be held at the 24 maximum hydraulic capacity downstream of that. So by converting that to equalization, it could hold it there and, and feather it out. So downstream, you didn't have to upgrade, hydrologically upgrade the downstream processes. So that was repurposed. And, and then also can be, once, once that is taken back out, that can be used as emergency storage. So you're not, you know, that, we designed the infrastructure to make sure that could still be useful later on for, for good redundancy. And then the second one was an innovative biological treatment retrofit. So the technology has really come a long way in the last 15 or 20 years. And so there's, it was able to have a, implemented a suspended fixed film system technology, which eliminated the requirement for new treatment basins. So those basins, those oxidation ditches that I showed you, they're, they're buried concrete, huge, very expensive basins. And so by not having to do more of those in the upgrade, it saved just an enormous amount of money by, by applying that technology. And it actually expands the treatment capacity of the biological treatment within, in there by, by 50%. So it's, you get 150% of the current capacity biologically in those basins, and you don't have to hydrologically upgrade them because of the EQ basin. So, so that was great. And really, what that does is, just real quick, is it puts small little particles in the wastewater that then, so that supports them. So in addition to the biomass that grows inside those basins that biodegrades the, the carbon and nitrogen, it has a fixed film aspect that is on the, these floating things, little particles that are, that are neutrally buoyant. And those go through, and they will settle out, once they're completely covered, they'll settle out in the, in the clarifiers, and then get, then they'll get screened out and put back in. So they get constantly recycled. And so it expands the capacity by just, you have to add screens, and then you add this, this media, and it increases your capacity. So it's, it's pretty state-of-the-art technology used for retrofit now in a lot of places. And then to also speed it up, we recommended a construction manager at risk procurement, which allowed overlapping design and construction schedules, which really, you know, was the final thing that allowed this to be done, the schedule's been done. And that's been quite successful. You know, we're, within a couple of months now, the first one being done, and PCL's the CMAR on it, and it's been gone quite well so far. What was included in the Four A upgrade? So it was just the bare minimum that we needed to, to get it expanded. The plant headworks, we have a new junction box, which I know you guys are familiar with, the, the force mains that are coming in, the new force mains from the east and the west. Those are coming into a new junction box. We upgraded the effluent pump station, because that one did have to, you did have to go above 24 MGD, had to get that up to 36 MGD, because that's before the EQ basin. Then the septic receiving station, and then all the stuff that goes into the effluent equalization basin pump station. As I mentioned, we retrofitted the biological treatment system, added tertiary filtration, then did sludge handling odor control and de-watering beds, and then an effluent pump station, which is really key to the new reclaimed water recharge and reuse. And then, then really, we're able to get permit updates for the 18 MGD capacity and unlimited discharge. So under the new permit, the, there is no longer a discharge limit for effluent. The total cost of that phase was approximately $34 million, which is less than $6 per gallon of capacity, which is dramatically less than an upgrade like this would normally cost. And I will come back to that here, to later on in the presentation, that'll come up again. So what are the, what were the objectives, or what are the objectives of Phase B? All right, so this is a continuation now. This is kind of the finishing of it. And it's really to increase the, the peak hour flow capacity for all the processes. So it's really to take that EQ basin back out and convert it to emergency storage, because it's not a, like, you know, it's, it's, we really would rather not use that at all. We have to do it right now, but our capacity is low enough that we can make this change to never have to use that EQ basin, because it's a tricky thing to use. It'll work, but it's, you know, there are some risks involved in that and, and operational difficulties as you go in and out of that. And so, you know, that's the objective here. And that'll, it'll maximize, the upgrades will maximize the operator's safety and improve work conditions. Now, it's not that it's unsafe right now, but it was done in a way that, you know, as these flows grow, because they're only at six and a half MGD now of that capacity. We had to expand the capacity, and then you grow into it. And so the idea is to get the Four B done to maximize some of these things, including operator's safety. And it'll increase the long-term reliability and operability of the plant, enhance the odor control for the entire plant, because there were some places that we're like, well, you could really use more odor control here, but we didn't have to, to get it done. So now we're following up now and doing those ones to make sure that, that the odor control is there as the plant capacity grows, and you'll be good neighbors in the long term. And then, of course, reduce the long-term operating cost per gallon. As you might imagine, when you do one of these short ones, you don't do everything that would make the cost low on operating. So as it grows, you want to bring those operating costs down per gallon. And so that really addresses the items that were put off in the Phase A in order to get it done for the time and the funding that was available. So the Four B upgrade, the new one, you know, what, what is going to be included? So that'll be a new administration building, because as it grows, you're going to need increased staffing. That'll provide more safety for the operators as we, as we upgrade the technology on that. Very much expand the lab capabilities and improve parts' storage. So all those things will make it less expensive and easier to operate and safer to operate the plant. And then, as I mentioned, converting the EQ basin to emergency storage, expanding the peak flow capacity of the downstream processes, the grit basin, splitter boxes, clarifiers, disinfection, all that, you know, everything that, so you can take that out, make it just emergency storage. And then enhance the odor control system, which I already mentioned. And then, a big one is for all these upgrades, the last few upgrades, all they did was abandon in place all the stuff that they weren't using for the next upgrade. And that's created a situation where every time they go to do something at the plant, they run into something that wasn't well documented. So, you know, that's, that, all that stuff really should be cleaned up and taken out of there. And that'll improve the safety, reliability, operating cost, and certainly the future cost uncertainty, you know. The, most of the changelors we've run into on the current job are because something that we didn't know was out there, was out there. So we're going to go through and clean up the whole site that way and, and make it, you know, fully usable and ready for the next expansion. You know, free up that space, and so the, the next folks coming in have a clean slate to work from. All right, cost and schedule here for B. So the projected cost of the upgrade is $70 million. And so that total brings the total cost for Phase Four A and B to 104 million over, you know, six years or so of the project. And that 17 million is much less than a typical cost per gallon of capacity, even with the, what I call the finishing of the upgrade. And most of the reason for that is because of the innovative technology and not having to do those big, expensive new basins. So in the end, you're still get, still get a lot of capacity for less money. Just, we, we looked up the cost per gallon of the Phase Three upgrade, which was commissioned in 2012, when things were a lot cheaper, and that was $22 a gallon, right? So, so the value that the city is getting and the, and the, the ratepayers are getting is, is very good, in our opinion, in comparison costs. So the projected Phase Four B schedule is 30 months. Again, there's no big rush on getting that done, other than, you know, if, if, the longer you go, there's some risk, and I'll talk about that in a, in a minute. So the 30-month schedule, you know, is not, you know, is not a relaxed schedule, because you need to get this done, but it's also one that's completely feasible and doable without, without a lot of risks. So in Q1, through design and CM, contracts first, coming up here this year, and then the GMP-1 submittal will be later this year with pre-purchase equipment, which is important, especially for electrical, some of the electrical gears are taking a year and a half to get. And then the final design will be done, and the GMP-2 submittal for the construction 2026, and then the start of construction in Q2 2026. And substantial completion and commissioning, actually, we bumped that back, that's going to be Q4 2027. I forgot to change that, my apologies. So that'll be Q4 2027. I'll, I'll modify that before I send this out. I also forgot to change the date on this presentation. So I'll, I'll make those modifications before I send the final copy of this out for your records. So that 30 months is pretty important. It's, it's, it's the, the least amount of time you can do this comfortably, but it's important, because as the effluent flow grows over time, the operational risks increase, right? So just the potential negative impacts, if that's, this gets delayed, is operational cost per gallon, plant worker safety, odor issues and complaints, process stability and permit violations, the, the risk goes up of that, and then water quality issues for effluent reuse and recharge. Basically, it gets, as the flows grow, it gets harder to operate, higher risk, it's more expensive. Okay, here's the milestones scheduled. This one was updated, so you can see there, the final completion happened in December 2027, from the start here of the initiation in March of this year. That's the schedule. And this, this is not new necessarily, so this is something that, you know, was kind of scheduled into the program here for, for a while. This is, this is new. This is our estimate of the, of the cash flow expenditures by fiscal year and calendar year for the, the remainder of the Phase Four A construction. You see that remainder is about 19 million, a little less than that now, that were chipped away at Q1 already in, in 2025. But you see, generally, we have it by each quarter for this, the remainder of Four A, the Four B, and then the recharge site, which is, has been initiated, but we're waiting on funding for that. We didn't get the funding. We had a meeting with the funding agency to ask them why, and so we're going to reapply with that, given their, their feedback on that. We're highly confident that that'll get funded by, James, who's the funding agency for that? Bureau of Rex, the Smart Water Program for the Bureau of Reclamation. Thank you, James. So that's the general expenditures of the program for each of these. Over time, you can see it goes all the way out to the, the end quarter four of 2027. And I, I'd say this asterisk there is funded by federal grant. Okay. Hopefully, didn't take up too much of your time, and you guys kind of are caught up on this, so I'll just open it up to questions.
Okay, any questions, anyone? Comments? Go ahead, Anthony.
This was the area that I speak about for our state of the city. And I do know that numbers up a little bit more than where we initially started with the expense. I think it was 80 million?
Madam Mayor, council members, 80 million includes a variety of projects. The 80 million included Phase Four A that Mr. McBride talked about, as well as the Cortson, the Cortson Force Main Line that's, that's going in the, the ground today, and also the West Side reuse line that's being constructed as well. And I believe it included the lift station that we're building on the west side as well. So there was a combination, what, what Mr. McBride has pointed out today and covered today, is mostly about the plant itself, the treatment wastewater reclamation facility. So that's, but, but there are some, obviously some additional costs with Four, with Four B, as he outlined.
Yeah, and this is a different window than we were talking about when we outlined the program, right?
And I do know, I do understand, this is necessary that we do the upgrade at that facility in order to work those lines that's going out west, as well as going down Cortson out to Hennessy. And I know it's very important that we get that solidified. So thank you for, for bringing that up, and I appreciate the work that you're all doing. And the understanding too, I think you mentioned it a little bit, sometimes you run into issues and problems. And so we understand that sometimes things are delayed. So I'm just looking, asking for patience for our community, because there's a lot of work that's going on on Cortson Road from that facility out. And it's going to be time assuming, but we're thankful that we're looking at the future, what's best for our, our city. So thank you for taking the time.
I appreciate that, Councilman. And we've, we've also, on the pipeline stuff, the city recently asked us, hey, can we look at doing trenchless technology to avoid getting out of the intersections? And I know there's been some issues with some traffic control in the intersection. So we're doing that right now. We're looking at doing trenchless technology through the intersections on the pipeline stuff we're working, which isn't part of this presentation, but I just want to mention that, that we definitely consider that, and I'm trying to make sure that it's, it's the least disruptive on, on the citizens.
Can you say that one more time, please?
Least disruptive, huh?
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, if I can, just to add a couple of other elements that I think is important. One of the reasons why we wanted to, as a staff, have this presentation done in advance of our budget preparation. Number one, we wanted to give all of you a context as we're moving through the various phases. As Mr. McBride pointed out, we found ourselves in a scenario about three, four years ago, where our discharge permits were not meeting what we could actually process at the plant. And so that became the initial, the initial goal, and, and Wilson and Company assisted us in, in moving to a point where that is not, where, where the, those discharge areas can actually grow with our plant processing capabilities. So that was a key goal. The second is that the, it has been clear by mayor and council and the staff that we want to reuse as much effluent as we possibly can. And there's going to be a number of policy discussions that this mayor and council will be having in the upcoming months related to reuse. And most importantly, we wanted to try to, with all of the moving parts with water, and I know we had a water presentation at the last study session, we want to begin to recapture as much of the effluent as we possibly can, because it will become a key to future growth in Costa Grande 15, 20, 30 years from now. And so those were really three goals that we had as we put the overall program together. But I think one of the most important elements, and, and Mr. McBride talked on the cash flow analysis that he, he showed at the very end, and, and they modify that regularly for us. But we're, really what we saw is a path to ultimately finance this on a year-to-year basis. We were taking various segments of this, of this project, because $104 million is, is, is one of the biggest capital improvement projects that the mayor and council will be considering. And so ultimately, breaking that down into what I consider to be bite-sized components for us to be able to put a financing plan behind that became key to the strategy that we, we started with Phase Four A. Any other questions?
Your, there you go. So on this, so the recharge site, I'm new to the council, so that's already underway, based on this, if we're in calendar year, just getting started, engineering.
Yeah, Council, we have done the initial conceptual plan and the, the report that has been, that is needed to submit for the grant. We submitted for the grant, we were denied on that, even though it looked like we were a shoo-in. And so we went and had that meeting with them to find out why. So we will be resubmitting shortly on that. And so we fully anticipate that that'll get funded under that, that, that grant. It is underway. It, it probably is not going to meet this schedule here, because that just happened, but it, it still could meet this schedule, because, you know, that, that, those things get reevaluated more than once a year.
Okay, so we don't have a CMAR then yet for?
We do not. We have, we have not moved to procurement on that particular project, primarily in the, in the grant application, where they're at, the, the program was very robust, and a number of municipalities around, within Penau County and around Arizona received funding for those. And we were, we were hoping we'd be able to take advantage of that as well. And so we will, as Mr. McBride pointed out, we just learned that late last week, that, that we did not receive the funding for that. And that was specifically for the design at that point. There's been some conceptual work that's been done, as Mr. McBride has pointed out. But, but certainly, there's, there's a bit of a history on that as well, Councilman. We, we actually had another site located and actually elected to move that to gain more capacity in the recharge capabilities, which is the project that Mr. McBride's speaking to specifically. But it becomes part of the overall goal of keeping that effluent within our community.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? I do have one question. So I know you talk a little bit about, you know, as far as the ultimate goal is to grow into capacity, going from, increase the flow from 24 MGD to 36. So when you say bring us, grow into capacity, how far out does that take us?
Well, according to, we, we're not the modeler, but according to the models that were done, I believe it was seven years.
Okay.
That, that was the last one that I saw, right?
Right.
Seven years.
So Larry, and after that seven years, you know, what, what happened? I mean, is it, we have to invest all of this again in seven years, or what, what happens?
It, it really depends on a variety of elements, and I hate to use that as an answer, but I will say that it really ties into some of the dialogue that we've been having about building additional capacity at this particular plant. We do have a, a number of acres in this, at this location that can actually, we can take advantage with, with expansions. We've also been talking about the east side partnership, and then the west side. We have not had a lot of dialogue with, with this new mayor and council on the west side, but global water actually comes into our city limits with their 208 on the west side. And so there, it, it certainly, we have options, is what I want everybody to know. But quite frankly, as the community grows, we're going to have to build additional capacity one way or the next in order to meet the demands. And one of the most important elements that, and, and I know the existing, the council members members that were here a couple of years ago heard this, we have really seen a significant change in the user type of, of our plant. We had a heavy emphasis on residential customers up until this, these most, this most recent economic development boom, and now we're seeing these manufacturing companies and the like that are coming to the community, and they dispose of an industrial waste at high volumes. And so really, we're, we're trying to position ourself, really from an efficiency perspective, as, as Mr. McBride pointed out. At the end of the day, we are looking for the efficiencies to our, to our customer base as well as we're, but the customer base is changing, and we're having to evaluate that as we move forward.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
Thank you, Brian. Anything else?
I guess I have one more based on that then.
Yeah.
Is there different processes at the plant itself based on industrial versus residential influence?
No, because the plant's sizable. If, if it was smaller, that would be the case, but it's, it's large enough now, and you have enough base residential that, that it'll, it'll offset any variances you get from the commercial and industrial users.
Okay, but if it was just a residential versus just an industrial, it would be a different process?
It would be, yes, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, for the next two presentations, want to introduce a couple of individuals that, and I'm.
Andrea, I'd like CAG to go first, if you're okay with that. Are you comfortable with that?
So the city of Casa Grande, as, as we pointed out at the last study session, you've, you've been meeting some of our partners and members that we have an ongoing relationship with. And obviously, I'm, the first is going to be CAG, which is a council of governments that ultimately provides services to a number of jurisdictions in typically a region, and those regions are established by the governor through an executive order decades ago. But, and I'll let, I don't want to take any of Andrea's presentation away from her, but Andrea Robles manages CAG. Councilman Huddleston has been the, the delegate from the council to serve on that executive board for a number of years. And really, this is an opportunity for, for Andrea to ultimately give the council a better understanding as a full of what CAG, the services they provide, and, and the relationships that they've got with their various municipal governments and Casa Grande specifically. So Andrea, it's yours.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I have with me our Transportation and Water Quality Planning Director. He'll jump in midway through the presentation, Steve Abraham. So he's going to change the slides, because I like to keep talking, and then I won't change the slides. So as Larry mentioned, CAG was incorporated in nineteen seventy-five, and we are one of six regional planning agencies. Our, the council of governments were established by Executive Order 70-2, and the governments of the region were encouraged to join and cooperate with one another in an effort to improve the health, safety, and general welfare of their citizens, to plan for communities and to plan for future development of the region. Next. So CAG is comprised of Hila and Panal Counties. We have the two counties, seventeen incorporated communities, and four Native American communities. Our twenty-three member entities are represented on CAG's Regional Council and our various committees. The Regional Council is comprised of our elected officials, which includes the mayors, council members, county supervisors, and our tribal leaders. Next, you will see CAG's organizational chart. We are a small agency. We have a couple of vacancies, and I wanted to point out, Xena Gagnon, she is our Mobility Management Coordinator. That is a shared position that we have through an IGA with the Sun Corridor MPO. So Xena does provide services on behalf of CAG and SEMPO for mobility management, and I believe Steve will touch a little bit on that. And I guess this is actually where I'm going to turn to Steve, so he can talk to you about water quality and a little bit about transportation.
Thank you, Andrea. Mayor, council, thank you for having us tonight. One of the primary ways that we serve your community is through the management of the EPA Section 208, which is, if, if you just call it a 208 plan, pretty much everybody in the biz knows what you're talking about, but it's part of a federal regulation of the Clean Water Act. Now, we're the designated planning agency for Hila and Panal County, and act as ADQ's liaison in the planning of those facilities across our particular region. The CAG 208 area-wide water quality management plan produced under the Section 208 is usually, and most frequently, a stipulation of development approvals within their planning approval processes. So that's a fancy way of saying is that the growth that you approve through your, through your zoning and planning processes also needs to be accommodated and appropriate infrastructure through this process as well. So like the facility that you just talked about here can accommodate, on a long-term basis, growth that you anticipate over the next twenty-year timeframe. So one of the other things that we do is provide regional coordination with public and private wastewater facilities, using these area-wide area plans. Every community, if they have a facility over a certain size and a certain capacity and, and other, other things, which I won't get into tonight, they have to produce one of these management plans. And that's a way that we can ensure active and continuous public involvement, coordination between jurisdictions and any stakeholders, both on the public and private side. Through this process, that we involve as many people as we possibly can, we hope that it, it coordinates an appropriate wastewater service to protect and enhance regional surface and groundwater, which is really the primary mission of, of the program. Also, to that end, beyond wastewater treatment facilities, CAG, with a generous grant from ADQ, we did a septic study, which basically documents and takes a look at possible malfunctioning or inadequate septic systems. So this would be for development that's not on a regional wastewater treatment facility, and the effects of, that those facilities may have on surface water. A similar study was conducted in Hila County, and it did bear fruit, that the county was able to receive some funding at the federal level to help remediate some of these malfunctioning In terms of regional planning, so getting a little bit away from the wastewater side of things, we do socioeconomic data collection for state population projections. Those are important, because the state likes to project and figure out where they're going to send the money coming around budget time. We ask for residential completions, annexations, and group quarter populations. Mobility management, so as Andrea said, our mobility manager also serves with SCIMPO, because we have a number of providers that cross those jurisdictional boundaries between Sun Corridor and CAG amongst many of your neighboring communities in, in the, in the valley here. We also provide some transportation planning services in a very limited sense. If you have questions about roads and, and larger transportation projects, we ask that you call Jason first. He's your, your primary contact, but he'll come up and talk a little bit more. But we take a look at Hila County, Eastern Panal County, and Ochkin Indian Community. And then lastly, we do the community block development program for the jurisdictions that you see listed here. Further, regional planning, in a, in a data gathering sense, we contract with MAG. Those state projections that I mentioned earlier are based on a massive computer program that MAG uses to calculate traffic and population in all, all over their, this region from here to basically Tucson. So we take a look at traffic count verifications. We met with some communities to make sure that we're setting those tubes up in the right spot to, to catch the, the areas that may not have been adequately captured in previous years. We review and update those land use databases and make sure that those land use projections that the larger agencies have are, are accurate. And then we also collect the residential completions and group quarters information, which that goes to the Office of Economic Opportunity for the development of the state annual projections for DES purposes. And shared revenue, by the way. Of course, can't leave that one out. Did you want me to go over this too, or?
I can jump in.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So one of the things that CAG also provides is project admin, management, technical assistance. And right now, one of the things that we're really jumping into what the program is with WIFA, so water infrastructure. WIFA contracts with the Rural COGS in Arizona to provide procurement and Davis Bacon monitoring for the WIFA project. So if you have any of those that you're interested in or currently doing, just make sure that you ask for the technical assistance. There is no charge to the member entity, and WIFA will cover that cost. Happy to share more information on that, but basically, they'll come out and contact us, and we can assist you and take care of your, your procurement and do those interviews. We have staff who has been working on multiple projects, and I believe he, so I might have jumped ahead. Steve, if you'll go to the next one, I'll talk about some of the WIFA projects. Staff has been out here in the Casa Grande area. Do we, right now, we have the Sierra Vista project. That one is near and, and earlier in the year, I thought she had listed it, the, I feel like we had two on here. I don't see them listed. But I know that last fiscal year, we had another one out here in Casa Grande that was completed. So you'll see staff in the area. We have several in Eloy, and the contracts are just coming today. I was on the phone talking about three new ones, so it's exciting to see that area pick up, and hopefully, we can keep those grants flowing with everything that's going on with budget season right now. The other thing that we do is we also offer project admin and assistance for USDA grants, EPA grants. We've recently been involved with the Army Corps of Engineers, and that's Section 595. And as Steve mentioned, we have the contract with MAG. So if there are any interest, or if I know that you guys have a much larger staff than some of our smaller member agencies, but if there is ever any assistance that you may need with grants or whatever, it may be happy to jump in and help. And then lastly, just wanted to touch a little bit on economic development. So CAG is one of three agencies in the state who was designated as an Economic Development District. And basically, that just provides some clout when applying for an EDA grant. We're here to help. We also have a SIDS committee, which we do have representation from the city, and most of our member, our member agencies sit on that committee as well. We develop a SIDS every five years, so we are getting ready to start that document. And I just want to share that we did learn this last year with Wilson and Company. If you are looking to apply for the EDA grants, funding is about a year to a year and a half out, so it's more of that future planning, not that immediate need. We had looked at a couple of Public Works Grants, and we were expecting that funding to come in the next few months, but unfortunately, it's a little lengthier to get to that funding. And then just lastly, I want to thank the mayor for attending our legislative day last week. It's a great event. We had about ninety people in attendance, so thank you for coming out. That is an event that we host jointly with Sun Corridor and ACOG every year. So looking forward to seeing you, and if any of your council members can come out next year, and then possibly some more engagement in the upcoming weeks with our legislators. I'll coordinate with Irene on that, and hope to have you guys out maybe to our office or in a general location to have another connection with them. So that's all I have. I know it was pretty quick, and I just want to share that we also do a 101 for all of our new members or anybody interested at the office. It gives you the opportunity to interact with some of our mayors and council members who are new to this committee or new to CAG. Sometimes they'll come to our regional council and say, what am I supposed to be doing? Why am I here? Why am I voting on this? So we do a more, sit down with staff and ask questions or dive more into this. I wasn't too sure how much time we had, so we'll also keep you on the invite for that, and if anybody wants to attend, you're welcome to come out to our office and jump into that as well. So happy to answer any questions.
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Huddleston, because you've been a member and representing the city for several years now, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor McFarland placed me on there.
And you said you're going to continue. I believe he's going to continue to.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. So thank you very much, Bob. Any questions, comments? Thank you very much, though, for the, for the summary. It's great for us to.
And you all have my business card, so feel free to call me with any questions, email, text, whatever it is.
Perfect. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, if I can, give a little bit of a history outline before I ask Irene to come up and start the SEMPO. Obviously, CAG provides a number of, of what we consider to be regional planning and guidance to the municipalities in Hila and Panal County. When, when Casa Grande reached a fifty thousand population city, and I was quickly trying to calculate that in my head when we did that, feels like yesterday, but I know it's been more than ten years. We, as a city, elected to become an entitlement city, which meant that the community development block grant funds are distributed directly to our organization, and all of you take action on the planning for those grant funds every year. We have a five-year plan, and so we're handling that internally as an organization. And we were also required at that point in time to form a transportation planning organization. We, at that, at that time, had an opportunity to simply take the similar strategy of CDBG and, and go on our own, but we elected to engage other, other municipalities and the county within Panal County. And ultimately, after a, a fair amount of dialogue amongst the groups, we found that several cities in Panal County had, had elected, such as Maricopa elected to go to MAG to receive the, their transportation services. The city of Coolidge, Eloy, and Casa Grande, as well as the county elected to form the SEMPO. And, and, and I'll let, I'll let Irene, I'll introduce Irene Higgs. I think most of you know her. I'll let her give you a bit of an overview. But both of these organizations work very closely with the city today, primarily on transportation and the 208. And, and again, as we're putting these puzzles together, the puzzle pieces together for all of you, I know that we've got 208 applications, particularly for the east side and the potential partnership with Arizona Water, so that we would be making application to CAG in that particular case. And you'll hear me apologize several times over the course of the next year, that in government, we have about twenty-five thousand acronyms that we throw out there regularly. And so I apologize if we don't spell those out, but if you have questions about what an acronym is, please ask, right, Councilman Edwards? We've, we, you're, you're now just starting to get, you're, you're at about twelve thousand five hundred that you understand, but, but certainly a lot of acronyms. But the Sun Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization, SEMPO. Ms. Higgs.
Thank you, Larry. And yes, we do use a lot of acronyms, and I, I try really hard not to do that when my, when I start with my executive board. Mayor Fitzgibbons is new to the board. I give her a list of acronyms in her book, so.
And then you keep adding more that you forgot on there. She's like, oh, shoot, I didn't have that one.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim Herman. And councilmembers, as Larry said, I'm Irene Higgs, and I'm the Executive Director for the Sun Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization, also known as an MPO. Tonight, I want to kind of give you an overview of why the MPO was formed, what we do, kind of highlight some of our accomplishments over the past ten years, and yes, Larry, it's, we're going on eleven years now, and what the future of the MPO looks like. So the 2010 census determined that the city of Casa Grande had reached the fifty thousand in population. And so by federal law, for the city of Casa Grande to be eligible for transportation funding, they have to form a metropolitan planning organization. The members included the cities of Casa Grande, Coolidge, Eloy, and a portion of Panal County. We cover one thousand one hundred and fifty-five square miles with an estimated population of a hundred and forty-eight thousand. In 2014, the city of Casa Grande and the Sun Corridor MPO signed an agreement for the city of Casa Grande to be our fiscal agent. They provide services to us in HR, finance, and IT assistance. The planning boundaries for the MPO must include at least the urbanized area, and then they look out twenty years, what that urbanized area for the whole area might look like. So you can see, we include Casa Grande, Stanfield, Coolidge, Eloy, and we go all the way down to the Panal and Pima County line down by Morana. So what is an MPO? An MPO is a transportation policymaking and planning body. We work very closely with local elected officials, our state and federal governments, including ADOT, Federal Highways Administration, and the Federal Transit Association, or Administration, I apologize, and. I apologize, and the Maricopa Association of Governments, Central Arizona Governments, and other stakeholders that are involved in transportation. The planning process that we do, we call it the three Cs, must be continuing, cooperative, and comprehensive. And by federal law, we must do everything with, including the, the public and everything that we do. So we have a pretty detailed planning process that includes the public. So here's our organizational chart. We are a staff of two. We report the, we have an executive director and a deputy director. And the executive director reports directly to the executive board. We do not have a management committee at this time. However, I do keep the city managers and the county manager well informed of the MPO progress or any situations that may arise. And then we have a technical advisory committee that reports to, then makes recommendations to the executive board. And here's our current board structure, which is comprised of elected officials from our member agencies. And then we do have one representative from the state transportation board. And then our transportation advisory committee is made up of our public works and planning staff from our member agencies. And we do have one representative from the Arizona Department of Transportation Multimodal Planning Division, the ADOT planner. Kudos to Dwayne. Dwayne has served as the chairman for the technical advisory committee for now going on almost 10 years. So thank you, Dwayne. He keeps me grounded, or he says I keep him grounded. I'm not sure which it is. So the MPO budget, we are 100% federally funded and the funding passes through the Arizona Department of Transportation to the MPO. Receive approximately $1.2 million annually. So that's funding the first three categories there, the metropolitan planning funds, the PL funding, statewide planning and research funds, SPR funding, and the federal transit 5305D funding is what we utilize to operate the MPO and to do any federally required studies or documents that the MPO is required to do. The last two categories, the Surface Transportation Block Grant Funding and the Carbon Reduction Funding, is the funding that we have to, to do design and construction projects. In today's environment, that's roughly $730,000. You can't build a lot for $730,000 in design and construction today. And so we, we've had to become very creative in how we bring money into the region. And so a couple of ways that we've been able to do that is ADOT has had a loan program between the councils of governments and the MPOs that where I can loan them my $730,000 for a couple of years and then get it back in order to do a larger project. Another way that we've been very successful in is competitive grants through either ADOT or the USDOT. And also direct allocations from our congressional districts and earmark funding through the state legislature. By doing these things, we've been able to bring in and help our member agencies bring in over $86.2 million in funding. And so you can see for the city of Casa Grande, we have helped bring in $23.1 million over the last, well, from 14 through 28, so we're programmed out to through 2028, 15 years. So if you take my $730,000 that I get a year, times 15, this will exceeds that amount of money. Might have had about $11 million to do design and construction projects. We're pretty proud of this. And, and whenever I touch, show you a couple of our studies, we'll show you how we've been able to accomplish bringing in that amount of money. So here's a couple of our planning projects. I'll touch on a few that we're actively doing right now and then a couple of that we've done where we've been able to actually incorporate some of those studies. So here's the studies that we are federally required to do. We are required to do a long-range transportation plan. That is required every four years. The Transportation Improvement Program lists all of our federally funded projects. It's a five-year plan. We are also required to do all the air quality conformity analysis. We are actually in a, what we call a PM 10 and a PM 2.5 non-attainment area. We also do transit studies. Title VI Plan is required every year and is due to the ADOT Civil Rights Office by August 1st of every year. And then we also have to have a very detailed public participation plan on how we are going to engage the public. Other studies that we do, we do safety studies, safe routes to school studies, and we also do traffic counts along with ADOT. So the Regional Transportation Plan is, like I said, a federally required document. It is updated every four years. This plan is a 25-year plan, so we are looking at current and future population and employment growth, the current transportation system, and what the future conditions would look like, also air quality. And it also requires us to outline our goals, objectives, and federal, federal performance measures. This study was just completed in March of 2024. We are currently kicking off a Safe Routes to School study for the city of Casa Grande. So this study was funded through a transportation alternative competitive grant through ADOT. We actually had the kickoff meeting starting this Friday. It will include all schools, K through 12, and we will include all public charter and private schools. And it will include the, the five Es, which includes engineering, education enforcement, encouragement, and evaluation. So we'll look at existing walking and biking for routes for students to schools, also the infrastructure that is in place and might be lacking. We'll document the, the walk and bike and vehicle interactions. So you're, you're going to see a lot of traffic counts coming up with possibly some cameras and all of that, looking at turning movements. And then we'll also look at walk and bike issues and barriers. And then we'll do recommendations that include these, the five Es is what we call it. We will be looking for a champion from council. We've done this in the past when we did a transit study and actually Mayor Fitzgibbons sat on that technical advisory committee. And it's really nice to have somebody from council on that committee to provide an update to council and to really be our champion. So stay tuned. If we have any volunteers, we'll be happy to take those. We're also doing a Safe Routes to School for the city of Coolidge as well. Another study that we're just about to wrap up is the Pinal County Strategic Transportation Safety Plan. When the MPO was first formed, the MPO did a safety study just for our region. And then we had the Maricopa Association of Governments and Central Arizona Governments who also had separate studies as well. And so Pinal County came to me and asked if we could do one combined study that had one vision and one goal. And so since 2019, the Sun Corridor MPO has been leading this effort. And so the, the safety plan really looks at all the crash data that's been submitted to ADOT for the past five years. And we look at how can we reduce the fatal and serious injury crashes? So again, we've got five Es, we call it. We like to use that in, in transportation. It's engineering enforcement, engineering enforcement, education, and emergency services. And so throughout this document, we identify our strategic areas that we really want to focus on, and then we highlight under each one of those areas what our five Es are and what those may be. Increased enforcement at intersections or, you know, maybe it's a, an app for, you know, team drivers or something like that. So just to give you an idea, during the past five years, we've had 360 people have died and over 10,473 people have been injured in reported crashes within Pinal County. So those just aren't crashes or people, those are actual mothers, daughters, husbands, wives that did not make it home. And so the plan is, like I said, wrapping up and we actually, it is out for public comment right now through February 22nd. We have two public events taking place. For February 21st, we will be in the town of Florence at their third Friday event from 5:00 to 8:00. And then Saturday, February 22nd, we will be at Lost Dusmen Days from 10:00 to 2:00. So this just gives you an idea, from 2014 through 2028, we have secured $7.1 million in safety funds for the city of Casa Grande. The two last projects there that say pending, we, we have submitted those to ADOT for consideration for HSIP, Highway Safety Improvement Funding Eligibility, and we're waiting for ADOT's response on if those are eligible or not. So since 2014 through 2026, we have secured $28.9 million in highway safety improvement funding for not just our region, but all of Pinal County. And in May of 2024, we submitted another $20.4 million of HSIP projects to ADOT for HSIP eligibility. If we're successful in bringing that $20.4 million in, we will have brought in $49.3 million in highway safety improvement funding to Pinal County. So we're pretty proud of that. Just a couple highlights of a couple of projects that, that are within the city of Casa Grande, the Florence Boulevard, West Camino Mercado Pedestrian Hybrid Beacon. This was a project that was completed, it was actually advanced, it was programmed for 2019 and we were able to get it advanced to 2017 because of the number of pedestrian fatalities that we had at this location. This project was 100% safety funded. Another project that just completed in June of 2024 was the Cottonwood Lane and Codola Avenue Pedestrian Hybrid Beacon. We actually had one pedestrian fatality at this location. And so, and to, and to qualify for highway safety improvement funding, you're going to have one fatality, unfortunately. And just to back up really quick, so the highway safety, the safety plan meets all the criteria for what we call, it's a new program, Safe Streets for All. And we've been working with all the towns, cities, and the county to identify projects that do not have that one fatal and to identify, as long as we have data, crash data, we can, we can submit grant applications for the Safe Streets for All. So once the Sun Corridor MPO Executive Board adopts this safety plan, any city, town, or the county can apply for Safe Streets for All grants. So back in 2019, we did a transit study for the city of Casa Grande and that's the Technical Advisory Committee that Mayor Fitzgibbons was participant on, and we really were thrilled to have her. The project was funded through a competitive grant through Federal Transit Administration. The study included a very out, you know, huge outreach to the public and we had over 500 responses from the public that said 91%, 91% of the survey respondents said they would be in favor of transit and 74% said that they would use transit. In 2020, the city of Casa Grande was eligible for what we call CARES Act funding. It was the coronavirus aid relief and economic security funding. It could only be utilized for transit. And so in coordination with the city of Casa Grande, a five-year transit implementation plan was done and to look at utilizing that CARES Act funding to fund a microtransit service, which is CG Link today. That service began in October of 2023. The I-10 Cortston Traffic Interchange Design Concept Report was completed in June of 2021. This is for a new interchange at Cortston. The city has applied for several USDOT competitive grants and fingers crossed, maybe this time we will be the, the recipient of that. So just a few infrastructure projects that I want to highlight. So we are currently partnering with the Arizona Department of Transportation on a dynamic message sign. And you'll see that on State Route 387, there are several proposed locations. ADOT does not put dynamic message signs on state routes. And so this was a new adventure for, for us to go down and Jason and I took some time convincing ADOT that this was needed. And so we turned our $569,000 of carbon reduction funding into, into this $2.9 million project with ADOT. And so they agreed to put some, some dynamic message boards on State Route 387 along with SR 87 over by Coolidge and also as you get off of I-10 over by Eloy. And then a couple additional larger message signs on I-10 near Val Vista and Early Road.
That's cool.
This was a $1.5 million pavement preservation and right turn lane project at Val Vista. Again, we'd had several, you know, accidents at this location and so this was a HERF exchange project where we swap our federal funds for HERF. And the city of Casa Grande can actually design, hire their own designer, and bid this project without having to follow the federal, all the, all the federal rules and And this is a list of additional projects, not excluding all those safety ones, that we have helped and assisted the city of Casa Grande in obtaining over $15.9 million. So we, two years ago, we were very successful in obtaining state funding. And so we have another House Bill, 2304. This is through the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council through, we call it RTAC. And this year, we are going, we are, RTAC in conjunction with the councils of governments and the MPOs across what we call Greater Arizona, which excludes Maricopa and Pima County, will be going after a $400 ask through our state legislature this year. And the Sun Corridor MPO has $32 million worth of projects listed in that ask. And so we're fingers crossed that we might be successful. I'm hearing the budget outlook is looking more favorable. So if you get a chance to talk to any of your state representatives, House Bill 2304. So what does the future of the MPO look like? So you can see that there are two new positions added onto this org chart, the Transportation Planning Manager and the Operations Manager. The Technical Advisory Committee and the Sun Corridor MPO Executive Board have recognized where our success has been over the past 10 years, and that has been through competitive grants, most of them through ADOT. And so with the board's permission and the technical advisory's permission as well, we are going to be pursuing two, these two new positions, utilizing that, some of that $730,000 that we get a year to do design and construction projects. ADOT has seen a 144% increase in percentage in cost in the last, since 2016. And so we just can't keep up with the current inflation rates. And so we want to put most of our focus on grants. And the Transportation Planning Manager is going to be managing a pre-scoping program, which was going to take some of that $730,000 in pre-scope projects, getting them to 30% so we have a good idea of scope, schedule, and budget. And then we'll utilize that for pursuing grants going forward. And that Transportation Planning Manager will be writing grants for our member agencies. And then the Operation Manager is going to be assisting me in the day-to-day financial and all the federal reporting requirements that are required as the MPO. So we're look, you know, we're excited for the future and we look forward to see where it takes us from here. And with that, I will answer any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you, Irene. Any questions, comments?
Lots of good, lots of good questions.
Very, very thorough.
And much like Andrea, I'm happy to sit down and talk to any of you, especially the new council members one-on-one, you know. the new council members, one-on-one, you know, to help go into, this is very high level, very quick, you know, on any additional information that you might like to, you know, to have.
And Irene, I just wanted to thank you because you're right. It's hard to believe that you've been with this organization for 11 years already. Wow, it just doesn't seem like it. It seems like yesterday Matt and I were just talking about that. But it is amazing that we hit that threshold, and even back then, we couldn't believe we hit that threshold at that time, and then look where we are now. But, you know, I'm just amazed with the amount of money and projects that you have helped facilitate in our community. You know, you talked about you can't build a lot on 730,000. No, we can't. And so, you know, we just appreciate, you know, everything you do with grants, earmarks, allocations. I've seen you in action. I see you at events. You're everywhere. And what I appreciate about you and your staff, what, your staff of one?
Jason Bonchin, by the way, my deputy director.
Thank you. And Dwayne, too.
Oh, Dwayne, yes.
And so, and you have some of our partners, Wilson &amp; Company and whoever that also participate, but I appreciate you being at community events and really getting, I would imagine you probably need some of this for your applications, but just getting the word out, getting people engaged, explaining to people. You guys are always so good in the community when you're doing all of these studies and input and collecting all that. So, but no, I, you know, you're bringing in two new people, so we're expecting, let's see, if you bring 23 million, you're doubling staff, so 46 million, maybe?
At least.
So we're...
Fingers crossed. Hopefully, the USDOT doesn't change too much up in Washington here in the next couple of months, so...
Right. No, but thank you again, and to Dwayne. I thought Dwayne was in here somewhere. I know Dwayne, yeah, he works closely with you, so, and everything that you do with the staff, and so, but thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Oh, here, sorry.
I'm sorry, I just thought of one thing, but when we were doing this all those years ago, you know, it's kind of making, it's a big decision for us, but I'm glad that we kept it more on our local side because I know if we had gone with some of the bigger agencies, we might not have the control we have to dedicate the projects to our local communities. Even Casa, I mean Casa Grande, if it's good for us, it's good for Eloy, and if it's good for Eloy, it's good for us and even the county. So you've made a good partnership there with all the stakeholders, so I'm glad to see that. And if you do get, or no, when we do get the Quartzon Road Interchange, that'll get that budget way up there, so...
Exactly. That will take me way over that, you know, because I think that's at like $66 million estimate right now.
So that'll just be right.
Yeah, when Dwayne and I first started on that, I think it was like $19 million was the estimate, and so it's definitely increased over the last few years. So Jason and I both have previous experience at the Arizona Department of Transportation. I worked there for 10 years, and Jason worked there for five, five years. And so one thing that we have really been able to help our member agencies, and I know Dwayne really appreciates this, is providing additional, we're like an extension to staff. We understand the federal process. We do all the initiation of projects for all of our member agencies and help them through the federal process. So I think that is something unique that we do that probably a lot of the MPOs do not do, so...
So the key takeaway, House Bill 2304, remember.
Yes, remember.
There's two projects, two projects in there for the city of Casa Grande, so...
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and take a break, right, till 7 o'clock? Okay, we'll adjourn this meeting. Do I need to adjourn? Okay, guys. Yeah, I know, right?